Counselor Hamilton. Counselor Woods. Counselor Daigle.
I'm Mayor.
Counselor Whitaker. Counselor Smalling. Mayor Sumner.
Introduction to media. Any media present? Anyone wishing to speak before City Council tonight on any subject matter will need to fill out a speaker form and turn it into the recorder. Forms are available on the sign in table in the back of the room. Please turn cell phones off or silence them during the meeting. Announcement for Zoom attendees. If you're joining tonight's meeting via Zoom, you will automatically be muted upon entry. And you'll need to identify yourself if your full name is not already attached to the device being used. You will be unable to unmute yourself. If you wish to speak, use the raise your hand feature. Use it. Click on the reactions icon at the bottom of your screen and click on the image of a hand. Public comment. The purpose of this public comment period is to allow citizens to present information or raise issues regarding agenda items only. There will be time at the end of the meeting for citizens to speak about off agenda items. A time limit of three minutes per citizen shall apply. All citizens must come up to the microphone. Are there any on agenda? Items? Yours were shown as off agenda.
Oh, okay, they're on agenda.
It's about the Oak Street woman's purchase, which is not on agenda.
It's in reference to loans for the purchase of Oak Street, which is not on the agenda.
It's not.
Alright. Do I have Karen Sirk?
Karen Meyer, Aspen Run, Sutherland. So I object to the use of the wastewater and waterfront reserves as loans for the purchase of the Oak Street property. These funds are not funded by taxes and fees, as are the balance of Sutherland funds. They are enterprise funds established by law by the state of Oregon. They are used to account for operations that are financed and operated in a manner similar to private business enterprises. Where the intent of the governing body is that the costs, including expenses and depreciation, of providing goods or services to the general public on a continuing basis be financed or recovered primarily through user charges. The packet says both reserve funds have sufficient funds in them that they may be loaned to the general fund for up to eight years. As a consumer, I would say that if there is that much of an excess in these fund accounts, perhaps the customer should be given a rebate or water wastewater rate should be lowered. But as a Sutherland resident, I would say that the funds need to remain where they are in case there'd been an emergency or unforeseen breakdown of equipment. We do not want to be in the position California found itself last week with a dry reservoir because of lack of repairs and fire hydrants to the no water as parts of the city burned to the ground, causing loss of life and billions in damages. Not to mention gut wrenching heartache. The other issue is what this money is for. Since last March, we've heard a lot of smooth talking in the city that have promised us a town hall. Since last March, and we're still waiting. Is the purpose for the citizens' town hall to pick out the drapes? Because that's about when we're gonna have one. The city has purchased an old logging pond with the intention of building workforce housing on it. Needless to say, it is a swamp and has contamination issues. The last they heard about it publicly, the city had no idea what the cost would be to bring the property up to a buildable state. Yet they went ahead and purchased this property for over half million dollars. Who does that? Who in their right mind goes out to purchase this property and does not first get an estimate of the cost of the work needed to bring it up to a buildable state? At least a ballpark figure. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Meyer?
My name's Mike Meyer, 1826 Aspen Run, Sutherland. I'm gonna talk about that loan also. It's my understanding that the government is to provide for infrastructure and for safety. And I'm really surprised that the city of Sutherland is getting into real estate. By purchasing this land, to me, that's just not what's supposed to be happening. It's just infrastructure and public safety is what we're looking at. And this workforce housing is, it'd be a stretch to call that infrastructure or public safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that didn't fill out a form yet? On to consent agenda, December ninth, twenty twenty four, meeting minutes. Do I have a motion? Make a motion to approve. Second? A motion to a second to approve consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Let's vote.
Counselor Hamilton.
Aye.
Counselor Woods.
Aye.
Counselor Daigle.
Aye.
Counselor Whitaker.
Aye.
Counselor Smalling.
Aye.
Mayor Sumner.
Aye. On to council business. Oath of office for mayor and council members. Through the reporter.
So if I can have the elected counselors come join me right up here, please. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye. State your name.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The state of Oregon.
The state of Oregon.
And the charter of the city of Sutherland.
And the charter of the city of Sutherland.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Do the best of my ability.
Do the best of my ability.
Form the duties.
Form the duties.
City councillor.
City councillor.
During the continuance therein.
During the continuance therein.
So helping God.
So helping God.
Congratulations.
I make the call, Sumner.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The state of Oregon.
The state of Oregon.
And the charter of.
And the charter of.
City of Sutherland.
The city of Sutherland.
And I will do to the best of my ability.
And I will do to the best of my ability.
Faithfully perform the duties of man.
Faithfully perform the duties of mayor.
During the continuance therein.
During the continuance therein.
So helping God.
So helping God.
Okay, on to council president appointment. Do I have a motion? To appoint a council president for this term. So last term, we had council president Hamilton.
Were you looking for names?
Names, yes.
I think Debbie did a great job, but I think it'd be nice if we passed the job.
Okay.
I'd like to nominate Debbie again.
So we already have one on the table, so we have to see if there's a second or and if that motion dies. So do we have a second for Larry Whitaker? I second Larry.
Oh, thank you. Sorry.
You want it?
Oh, I think that Debbie is doing a really good job. I think he brings up a good point that some of these things need to be passed around. So that's why I pulled him to hit if you wanted.
So we have a motion and a second. We have discussion on Larry. Okay, let's vote.
Counselor Sernowski. Counselor Hamilton. Counselor Woods. Counselor Daigle.
Aye.
Counselor Whitaker.
Aye.
Counselor Smalling. Mayor Sumner. Motion carries.
Okay, on to Parks Advisory Committee Chair Appointment. Do I have a motion? A name?
Where is, is there one now? Is there a connection?
Yes.
Gotta be a council member, though.
You don't want to double up, Larry, I'll do part. Or do you want to keep this?
I kind of like to help keep them first.
Okay, I'm gonna keep showing up to meetings, though, because that's the one I enjoy, too.
And you both have committed to a Parks master plan. But until you've talked about it again, get done with your round.
I'll make a motion. We put Larry in part.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Let's vote.
Counselor Sernowski. Counselor Hamilton. Counselor Woods.
Aye.
Counselor Daigle.
Aye.
Counselor Whitaker.
Aye.
Counselor Smalling.
Aye.
Mayor Sumner.
Aye.
Motion carries.
On to TLT Council Representative Appointment. Do I have a motion?
Just for turn for, is that been you?
Me and Gary.
Okay.
So we need two? On that one? Okay. So two times two.
Do you want to keep doing it? Same council?
He doesn't.
Did I make that motion?
Yes. For both of them at the same time, or is one correct?
Yes. Okay, do I have a second?
Who are the people I hear?
Sean made a motion for Debbie and Gary.
Oh, I'll say.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Let's vote.
Counselor Sernowski. Counselor Hamilton.
Aye.
Counselor Woods.
Aye.
Counselor Daigle.
Aye.
Counselor Whitaker.
Aye.
Counselor Smalling.
Aye.
Mayor Sumner.
Aye.
Motion carries.
On to Finance Committee. Council appointments, two of them. Do I have a motion? Lisa and.
Joe Grossman was the second one.
Oh, we need to. A motion for two people.
Not really, but I will.
I make a motion to nominate Lisa and.
We'll have a second.
A second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Counselor Sernowski.
Aye.
Counselor Hamilton.
Aye.
Counselor Woods.
Aye.
Counselor Daigle.
Aye.
Counselor Whitaker.
Aye.
Counselor Smalling.
Aye.
Mayor Sumner.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, on to Commission Committee Board Appointments and Reappointments. Staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Bo Hart, City Recorder. We have several committees that have vacancies, and we have received quite a few applications and reapplications to help, but still not enough to fill all of those vacancies. On the Planning Commission, we have six vacancies with two terms ending December thirty first, two thousand twenty six, and four ending December thirty first, two thousand twenty eight. The city has received applications for appointments from Rosalind Mock, Thomas Williams, and Terry Brock, and reappointments from Thomas Schaub and Michael Hogsett. We are asking the appointment terms to be determined by council. On the Budget Committee, there are five vacancies with two terms ending December thirty first, two thousand twenty five, and three terms ending December thirty first, two thousand twenty seven. The city has received an application from Rosalind Mock and reappointments from Renee Lilly and Michael Hogsett. Appointment terms to be determined by council. On the Parks Committee, or Parks Advisory Committee, there are four vacancies with terms ending December thirty first, two thousand twenty six. The city has received an application for reappointment from Areka Todd Miller. The suggestion motions are to appoint and reappoint the applicants to the positions they apply for.
Why are we changing the terms? Because it's harder to get people, or what?
So the reason that they're different terms is they have a split usually between those.
Want us to change those.
No, you just need to.
We need to elect which ones.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
We've already proven that to me.
So I'd like to give the new people that are not reappointments an opportunity to come up and tell us a little bit about yourself. Is Terry Brock here? Rosalind Mock? Thomas Williams?
Hi.
Hi.
I'm trying to put you on here.
Yeah, right there.
Yeah, so my name's Thomas Williams. Lived in Sutherland since eighty-three. I'm the president of Umpire Research Company down in Riddle Creek. We have, we do water, soil testing. We have an R and D lab, engineering services lab, and we also do materials testing like concrete, aggregate, asphalt, quality control testing. I don't know. Mostly my interest in being on the planning committee is just to get a little bit more involved in the community and it's an opportunity to do something. When I went in to do some other stuff in the the city office, they expressed they were having a difficult time getting volunteers, so I'm willing to help out if I can. So that's all I have unless you have any questions.
Thank you very much for volunteering. So we're, the recommendation is to point all of them. Now, what our job is to decide which ones would be filling which terms. Some of them end in two years and some end in four years. So. And I think, I mean, my recommendation would be for the reappointments to put them in the two years since they've already been doing it, and the appointments to put in four years since they haven't done it for a while.
I would agree.
Yeah, on this little sheet here, it says red on there.
Oh, my, to the left.
So what do we need to do?
So we need to make.
For the record, the needs.
Again, so.
I was asking Bo to do something that I couldn't actually very well articulate. So in this particular case, if Terry Brock is a new one, we want him to be on the twelve thirty-one twenty-eight. If Rosalind Mock is a new one, she would be on the twelve thirty-one twenty-eight, correct?
Yes.
Thomas Williams, new, twelve thirty-one twenty-eight, and the final two would be twelve thirty-one twenty-six.
Right.
Because you have one more opening than you have applicants. That's when the map works out a little bit differently, but according to what you just said, that's what you said.
Right. And then we have three terms ending on twelve thirty-one twenty-five and three ending on twelve thirty-one twenty-seven. Right. So we would have the two reappointments ending on twelve thirty-one twenty-five. And the top one is twelve thirty-one twenty-seven. And the last one, the only one, so.
Senator Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Williams would like to serve on the Budget Committee as well. There are no handcuffs coming out.
Okay, so then adding Thomas Williams.
Mayor.
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt. There's a couple of legal issues related to the Budget Committee that I think I should provide you all some advice on before you make appointments. So I would suggest that you maybe move that over to your next meeting for the Budget Committee. Go ahead and make the other appointments tonight. And then I can certainly talk to you and Jerry offline, or if you want to take a break, I can talk to you now. But there's some issues I think you should consider before making Budget Committee appointments.
Okay.
Wait, let me turn that off.
How do you do that?
Okay, so let's go ahead and appoint the Planning Commission and the Parks Advisory Committee tonight. We can either.
Next month.
Next month, we will appoint the Budget Committee. It's not essential. We don't have another meeting for them until May, I believe.
Right.
So we have time for that one.
Okay.
And we can then discuss with Thomas how to add his name to it. Alright, so do I have a motion to appoint Terry Brock, Rosalind Mock, and Thomas Williams to the Planning Commission ending twelve thirty-one twenty-eight, and Michael Hudson and Thomas Schaub to the Planning Commission ending twelve thirty-one twenty-six?
I solemnly make that motion.
Okay. Any discussion on that? Let's vote on that.
Okay. Counselor Sernowski. Counselor Hamilton. Counselor Woods. Counselor Daigle.
Aye.
Counselor Whitaker.
Aye.
Counselor Smalling.
Aye.
Mayor Sumner.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I have a motion to appoint, reappoint Rebecca Todd Miller to the Parks Department. Parks Advisory Committee, sorry. Term ending twelve thirty-one twenty-six.
I'll make the motion to appoint Rebecca Todd Miller to the.
Any discussion? Vote.
Counselor Sernowski.
Aye.
Counselor Hamilton. Counselor Woods.
Aye.
Counselor Daigle.
Aye.
Counselor Whitaker.
Aye.
Counselor Smalling.
Aye.
Mayor Sumner.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, and we will put over the Budget Committee until next meeting. On to Resolution twenty twenty-five point oh one, surplus property, police department equipment. Police Chiefs.
Air Council Troy Mills, Chief of Police. So the Southern Police Department has one patrol vehicle and associated equipment that is now unusable. And we are putting that up to have it surplus along with the gear in it that we can't reuse as well as the light bar itself. The recommended motion is to approve, to approve the resolution for surplus property or not approve the resolution for surplus property.
Troy, we can't even use the light bar again?
No, the Fords that, this is a Ford we're getting rid of. The new design of the new Fords, it's a wider, longer, bigger body for it, so all the equipment of this car can't be reused. We usually, if I can find another agency, a smaller agency or an agency in need, I usually donate that equipment to them. If possible. What's that? We have a good sharing network.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve twenty twenty-five point oh two resolution.
You mean oh one?
Okay, so twenty twenty-five oh one. That's what I thought I said.
You did.
Oh, one.
There's three.
Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution twenty twenty-five point oh one, surplus property, police department equipment as presented. Any discussion? Vote.
Counselor Sernowski. Counselor Hamilton.
Aye.
Counselor Woods.
Aye.
Counselor Daigle.
Aye.
Counselor Whitaker.
Aye.
Counselor Smalling. Mayor Sumner.
Aye.
Motion carries.
On to Resolution twenty twenty-five point oh two, Enterprise Reserve Fund Loan Agreement. Agreement. And I assume it is the finance director, not the police chief, like.
Yes, it is. Mayor, Councilor, Tammy Trobridge, Finance Director. This is simply to formalize the action that was taken, I'm sorry, to formalize the repayment schedule of the action that was taken in December for the approval of the loan agreements. This, just with a little background here, water and wastewater funds are divided into four categories, each one of them, which is operations, construction reserve, equipment reserve, and debt service. And these loans are out of the equipment reserve. They are. Aaron does a really good job with his departments of using their equipment carefully and have used these funds as sparingly as possible. They aren't, I would not say that you are very, what about, what's the word I'm looking for? He doesn't spend the money.
That's right.
Yes, he is very, yeah, that was what I was trying to say. He is a type one, which is fortunate for us, but it's still necessary to have these funds over there in case they have a vehicle that goes sideways or they need a new forklift. And over the past five years, they've been very careful with these funds, and each of these reserve funds have only had a total of fifty thousand dollars spent out of them on either pickups, forklifts, et cetera. So this is not like mainline or cathodic protection or that type of infrastructure reserve. That is not what these funds are for. Just to clarify that. And this is simply to, again, formalize the repayment schedule. And should private investment come in sooner on this project, these funds would be repaid immediately, and there's no repayment penalty.
And are there any foreseen need for this money in the next five?
According to our capital investment plan, there is not. That will not be able to be accommodated with what is left over.
And just to clarify, these are, these funds are reserve funds, which has been something that the city has basically built up over the last more or less ten years that the city really didn't have before, and it's something that we have so, that we build up so that when we we need to rebuild something like the wastewater plant or the water plant or vehicles, things like that, that we have the money. It's not like we're just raising rates just to hoard money.
That is exactly right. And to apply for some of those loans for the things that you talked about, you actually have to have that kind of an incremental increase built into your plan so they can rest assured that the money you borrow on those bigger projects will be repaid.
Definitely. And so we would, hopefully, we'll have the funds, so if we have to do anything like this, we won't have to raise water rates or wastewater rates like what happened a while back.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Can you tell me again, just to refresh, what is the money going to be used for specifically?
This loan, these loans, it was for the Oak Street property purchase. This loan, these loans, it was for the Oak Street property purchase. The general fund purchased that property.
What's the total amount?
Was five hundred and sixty thousand. I'm sorry, I can finish the, my report here. The options are to adopt Resolution twenty twenty five point oh two, approving the Enterprise Reserve Fund Loan Agreements as presented. Or to not adopt the resolution approving those funds or to modify that, and suggested move, motion is that it be approved. No, it's just, I'm sorry, it's the repayment schedule, basically, it's formalizing that, yes.
Do I have a motion? To adopt Resolution twenty twenty five point oh two, approving the Enterprise Reserve Fund Loan Agreement.
No, no, it's not loan agreement.
Well, it does say so on the top of my pa- on the paper that you had approved, it said the.
It doesn't matter, no big deal, just wordsmithing.
A motion.
I'd like to motion that we adopt Resolution twenty twenty five point two, approving Enterprise. Reserve Fund Loan Agreements as presented.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
So I'm a motion and second, any discussion?
You know. I still think. I think we're still like. Advancing too quickly on that part of this. And, and it just seems like. It isn't prudent to buy something before we have the rest of the plan again. It, it wouldn't be a wise business decision if we, if we had seen this doing there. We want to have the whole plan where it's. Anyhow, that's my thoughts.
Any other discussion?
Councilor Saranowski. Councilor Hamilton. Councilor Woods. Councilor Dagel. Councilor Whitaker. Councilor Smalley. Mayor Sumner. Motion carries.
On the City Manager Report.
Real briefly, um with the hiring of a new city recorder replacing Molly who went to Alaska. Um we uh need to reassign this position as Debbie did to be a check signer. And um the, according to the new rules zone called bank, I'm required by a lot of state on the public record that Bo is going to be a check signer.
Thank you. On the council comments, remember monthly meeting time is limited, please ask questions or make statements that are likely to benefit the group. Individual comments and questions that can be handled on a one-on-one basis should be handled outside the meeting. Councilor Whitaker. Councilor Smalley.
I'm a big supporter of the workforce project, you know, we have, we have a huge need for housing for our kids around here, so. It might be a little bit of a leap for the city, I trust that the staff is doing their due diligence to make sure we're doing the right stuff, and yeah, I'm a supporter, so.
Councilor Saranowski.
Good to be back.
Councilor Hamilton.
Um I agree with Sean. I love, love, love our Christmas lights in the park. This is the guy who made them all, I did ask him in case any of you were wondering what happened to tree number three. And he said it blew out at the top or something.
Get to fix it, so.
Anyway, I think, I think our lights are fabulous in our downtown, so. Thank you everybody for that, all the guys got to put it up, take it down and stuff.
All the work.
I'd like to, I'll thank the city guys for helping me this year, normally it takes me all day, we were done in about two and a half, three hours, so that was nice.
Councilor Woods. Um I just like the, the fact that we are seeing the um reconstruction happening on the two buildings over here with the urban renewal. It's nice to see some baselifts that are starting to happen through some of those grants.
Councilor Dagel.
Here's a couple things. We had a, a budget meeting that we arranged, but we got some really good information and I always say a really good reason. We learned a lot from that, and it's kind of a shame that general public doesn't get in on that more because. Yeah, that's a really important. We're gonna do it again. Yeah, that was really good. Bo setting up another one, and it's going to be at a regular council meeting for a workshop to go community to listen to. You know, I, I enjoyed it, but um. The other thing I kind of want to say since the first of the year is, you know, people thinks it happens. Especially like in places like California, but all these laws and regulations keep piling up and pretty soon nobody can move. And we saw examples of that trying to get our fire trucks to there, you know, it's like. We don't need that kind of stuff, and I hope that. When we come up with regulations and, and ordinances here, we really consider that. Is it really necessary, or are we just adding more government to, to the problem of this? I'd like to see that. Give some real serious thought to that. The other thing, I, I, everywhere I've lived, I've had this point, and people always felt like the government was. Was against the citizens, it was like us against them, and, and I hope we never did that way, and. Actually, if I felt that, I wouldn't do this, I, I think it's important that our citizens are the ones that are important here, not us. And, and I want to make sure that we're doing what they need and want. Anyhow, that's really all I have to say, my little reason for the year.
Thanks. Well, they, first of all, I wanted to thank uh everybody who's come tonight, it's really nice to see so many citizens um. Come to our council meetings and really uh be a part of what's going on and listening to what's going on and. And coming up and speaking if you have something you would like to say. So I, I find that uh. Really, uh really, I really appreciate that, because I think uh it's really important for people to hear what happens at these meetings. Um I want to welcome Adam Saranowski, our newest counselor, to our, our. Counsel, I really appreciate chatting. Um and thank you for. To Adam and to the city for putting up all the Christmas lights, I really liked downtown, it's so nice driving down it in the evening. And I also uh want to second. Councilor Smalley for the workforce housing, so I, I see it every day in my other job about. The housing that is necessary and needed throughout our community, throughout the state and throughout the nation. Of this gap in the housing between the really low income housing through HUD and then. The, the higher income housing where people have already moved up from their first house. And in the middle where there's no housing available, and I think we're doing something really special in our town, in our city here. Uh uh joining with businesses that have uh entry level employees. That they want to bring to their businesses, but have no place for their families to live, and bringing in. The employers to help build this. This community so that people can live close to where they work and help uh. Their businesses fill the open uh positions that they have so that their businesses can thrive. And even at our schools and at our medical facilities. Um you know, we want, we want to have those schools so that we can send our kids there and go to the doctor and have enough employees to work there. So I think this is really important, and if we can, as a city, help make that successful, I think we should do that. And so I'm, I'm counting on our city staff to do their best. Uh to make that happen with our support, and I'm helping with the citizens' support as well, so. Thank you for listening to that, and if uh I'm, I'm always open for more suggestions, coming to the coffee with the mayor once a month. And coming to these uh, these meetings here, so, thank you. And with that, I think that's the end of the meeting, appreciate it. Oh, wait, I didn't get any. Oh, I was supposed to give them to this to record. Okay, the last part. Off the agenda? I, I didn't get any uh notice that we had them, but you're right, I didn't read it, so. Purpose of public comment is to allow citizens to present information regarding items off the agenda. Time limit of three minutes per citizen shall apply, but I didn't.
When you guys spell those out, be sure to give them to.
I apologize, I will fill one out if you need one.
I was talking to people behind you, but.
It actually doesn't say to do it ahead of time.
Is in there for twenty years.
I think she reads it too at the beginning. Yeah, I, I read it at the beginning. So do we have some? Do you want to bring them up? You gotta bring them up.
Evening, Mayor, Council President. And members of council, Jim Hausman, President of the Friends of Fort Pond. I would like to thank the counselors that promptly responded to my December twenty eighth email. Regarding our concerns for the potential collapse of the new walking path. Aaron Swan responded the following Monday, and we met on site on Tuesday and walked the path. As I stated in my email, we first reported the problem on November fourteenth, after the first inch of rainfall this season. Nothing was done until we sent the December twenty eighth email, and as a result, there is now damage to sections of the new path. During this six-week period, Public Works employees regularly drove through the flooding sections of the path during their nearly daily patrols. And no preventative action was taken to address the flooding issues. After walking with Aaron on December thirty first. Public's work, public work staff installed a rip, rip wrap on two sections of the path that were being undercut. In addition, they lowered the elevation of Woodruff Pond on the levees south side. Which alleviated some of the flooding that had been occurring for weeks near and around the boardwalk. However, there are still sections of the path on the southeast and west sides of the pond. That are experiencing flooding and erosion due to improper contouring, drainage, and the need for additional culverts. We're concerned that no actions have been taken to protect these sections of path. We are troubled that contractors are not being held accountable for the repairs, instead. The problem is falling to the city's Public Works Department to commit staff and money. We're concerned the city is spending money on something that was supposed to be done correctly. That is a repetitive problem with the city's contractors not being held responsible, as with the damage to the first half of the paths northwest. And southeast sections. The northwest section's damage continues to expand, and the southeast section continues to slough off. Which required the city to install safety barriers. The city had a contract to have a job done correctly. That contract included a project engineer who also happened to be the project manager, and was also the city's engineer. City Council should be asking hard questions about this practice. We request you direct city staff to consult with the city attorney to determine the necessary actions to hold the contractors accountable. To resolve this before the warranty expires. It's hard to watch the damage resulting from a lack of action to protect the investments so many made to bring this park to fruition.
Thank you. Beth Hausman?
Beth Hausman, one oh nine, Frontier Court. Good evening, um I'd like to be an informed citizen, so I am requesting. That MP three versions of all city meetings be added to your website for easier access on cell phones. I'm on the board of the nonprofit Friends of Fort Pond, which was formed at the request of the city manager. To advocate for and bring volunteers and funding to Fort Pond Community Park. The Friends maintain a vested interest in this park, having participated in all the master planning and design meetings. The playground designers included a large brass lawn to provide enough space for passive and active activities. Our city did not get that lawn, we got uneven ground with patches of grass and clover overrun with thistle and weeds. Because the contractor didn't properly level and pre-treat the existing weeds. At the September grand opening, the city's design contract, contractor, David Doherty said he rejected the lawn. And it would be redone in the fall. City staff also told us it was rejected and to be redone. Specifically, to be compacted and reseeded as part of the post-construction agreement. The day came and a few shovels of dirt were tossed with a few handfuls of seeds, and I don't know who inspected, accepted, and signed off on the work. For comparison, when the concrete work was rejected, it was ripped out and redone correctly twice. The Friends New Activities Committee meets next week, and I struggle to commit our funds to offer any exercise classes or games. On that thorny, unsafe tripping hazard, this is a brand-new park, and that lawn is an embarrassment. Will this area be properly leveled, compacted, and reseeded as was required to meet the contract deliverables? Or will one of the key attractions, literally half the playground, remain an expensive waste of space that people avoid using? The Friends want to propose to the city a full calendar of free park activities beginning in May, we have been patient, but now we need a timely response. Lastly, I ask you to please prohibit smoking in the park and playground, we all know secondhand smoke is unhealthy. The ban should include parking lots because smokers sit in their cars or on their tailgates next to the picnic tables and paths. It's about livability and enjoyment, and why smoking is prohibited at Music Off Central. Also, volunteers, including myself, are tired of picking up their mess around the park. And on a personal note, there is a real fire danger with the dry summer grass and so many houses nearby, including mine. Happy May.
The Matter, three fifty, West Sixth Avenue, um I. To oppose, as everybody knows, this Oak Street project. Um I, the, the funds that you're borrowing. Sound almost as if we are being overcharged for our water in our sewer, and that disappoints me. It also worries me that if you're using this money. Um from the time that you're borrowing it to the time that it's repaid, if something happens, who's going to pay for that? Um my biggest concern is the town hall, when are we going to have a town hall? And the task force hasn't met since August, there has to be something since August. That has occurred or has transpired or that we've learned that the task force should be meeting over. So the, the third thing that I want to state is there's still been no notices sent out publicly to the surrounding community. Or the whole community, I don't understand why you're moving forward with the project and you're not notifying. The immediate community of what you're planning on doing, a lot of people don't follow social media, and a lot of people don't go to the city website. So those people are completely unaware of what you're doing. Also, the traffic on Sixth Avenue, I've not seen, sorry officer, I've not seen an increase. In patrol there, and people are speeding, it's getting busier and busier, so I have concerns about that. But what I'd really like to know is, when is the town hall going to take place, when are you going to notify? The community of what the plans are for Oak Street, it seems like. You're not having that so that you can keep everybody in the dark, so you can do. you're not having that so that you can keep everybody in the dark, so you can do what you wanna do and then here it is, this is what we're doing and you have no choice in the matter. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Thank you. We are going to have a urban renewal meeting after a five minute break. Roll call, please.
Adam Sarnoski.
Here.
Debbie Hamilton. Michelle Sumner.
Here.
Lisa Woods.
Here.
Gary Daigle.
Here.
Larry Whitaker.
Here.
Sean Smalling.
Here.
Anyone wishing to speak before the agency tonight on any subject matter will need to fill out a speaker form that you'll find back on the back table and please turn it in to our city reporter. Forms are available on the sign-in paperwork. Please turn off your cell phones or silence them during the meeting. Announcement for Zoom attendees, if you're joining tonight's meeting via Zoom, you will automatically be muted upon entry and you'll need to identify yourself if your full name is not already attached to the device being used. You will be unable to unmute yourself. If you wish to speak, use the raise your hand feature. You use it, click on the reactions icon at the bottom of your screen and click on the image of a hand. Public comment. The purpose of public comment period is to allow citizens to present information or raise issues. A time limit of three minutes per citizen shall apply. All citizens must come up to the microphone. Do we have any public comment? No, seen none. We'll move on to the consent agenda. The November twelve, twenty twenty four minutes, I need a motion, please. Make a motion to approve minutes from November twelfth, twenty twenty four, a second. Any discussions? No. Motion is to approve the consent agenda as presented. Vote please.
Adam Sarnoski. Debbie Hamilton.
Aye.
Michelle. Michelle Sumner. Lisa Woods.
Aye.
Gary Daigle.
Aye.
Larry Whitaker.
Aye.
Sean Smalling.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Uh, yeah, I wanted to mean her, mean her, her, and it came with great pleasure.
It wasn't in the air either, so. Agency business, chair and vice chair appointments, staff report and city reporter.
Good evening, urban renewal agency members. Per Sutherland Municipal Code, the Urban Renewal Agency is to appoint a chair and vice chair every two years. Staff has followed the same schedule as the city council falls with appointing a council president. The appointed chair will be responsible for continuing the meeting and a script will be available in the instance a new chair is appointed.
Nominations, new nominations, do you do, do we wanna do them both at the same time?
Uh, we can.
Vice chair?
Sure.
Okay. Nominations for chair?
Discourager, you wanna move it around?
I'll second it.
You really did. Vice chair. I nominate Lisa Woods.
Was it she the vice chair now too?
Mm-hmm.
We have a motion in a second to appoint Debbie Hamilton as agency chair and Lisa Woods as agency vice chair. Any discussion? None. Vote please.
Adam Sarnoski.
Aye.
Debbie Hamilton.
Aye.
Michelle Sumner.
Aye.
Lisa Woods. Gary Daigle.
Aye.
Larry Whitaker.
Aye.
Sean Smalling.
Right.
Motion carries.
Grant application proposals. First one is one seventeen A West Central Avenue. Business relocation, staff report from community development director.
Okay, this one. Urban renewal agency members, Brandy Maderas, community development. Uh, the urban renewal agency is being asked to approve a funding request for the grant application as recommended by staff. The subject law is located in the downtown area, identified as tax lot seventy one hundred in section seventeen DC of Township twenty five South, range five West, property ID R five five nine eight one. We've received a grant application for business relocation and additional improvements in the downtown district at one seventeen A West Central Avenue. The applicant has submitted their architectural drawings for the interior improvements, which is attached to the application. The application qualifies for twenty five thousand dollars based on new business relocation and additional improvement grant monies considered for the business. Relocation of this business into the downtown district will help foster economic growth while retaining and enhancing the character of the district. Staff will confirm all application requirements are met. Your options are to approve the grant application in the amount of twenty five thousand dollars with the application requirements being fulfilled or to deny the grant application in the amount of twenty five thousand. The suggested motion is to approve the grant application in the amount of twenty five thousand with the application requirements being fulfilled.
Thank you. We need a motion.
I make a motion, we approve the grant for twenty five thousand dollars for the Home Builders Association.
So, one seventeen.
One seventeen A West Central.
Second?
I'll second.
To approve grant applications for one seventeen A West Central Avenue in the amount of twenty five thousand dollars each as presented. Any discussion?
Nobody is, I do have a question. Okay, so that, that building frontage, it's, what's the, the linear footage of that? It, it says it's like nine hundred and thirty-one, the, the square footage, but what's the linear frontage?
So, of this portion, um, that they would be going into is twelve and and so this is, we kinda use that, um, standard twenty five thousand dollar amount is what we've been, um, using kind of moving forward and providing economic growth. So this isn't necessarily based on a linear frontage, this is the business relocation grant of their request.
Where, where is it currently located?
In Roseburg. It's, so it would be a new business to our area. And I believe we have someone willing to speak on their behalf if you would like. Gonna tell him a little bit.
Yeah, come on up, Gary.
I think they're necessary. No, don't bother.
Come on up, Gary.
Appreciate that.
Gary Fadness, we go next, traffic and design. How can I help you? So, question.
So kinda tell them.
Okay.
Means behind relocating.
Okay, so, first of all, the, as the, the board of the home builders being located in Roseburg, they have the home builders in general have been, um, not very well assisted by the city of Roseburg. And so many contractors complain, there's a lot of issues and the home builders has seen what the city of Sutherland is doing, the growth that's happening, the improvements that are happening and how open the city council and managers and whatnot are to growth. And they wanted to move to Sutherland to be a part of that and support local contractors coming into the association. And so that was the original thought behind them moving to Sutherland. The other thought was, um, the building that Summer has is available. It, it was a kind of a blank slate and it would be something that they could, uh, grow on. Going into that, there, we've had inspectors out there for HVAC and several other things and it's, it's an old building, none of it's up to code. We're the home builders, Home Builders Association. We have to meet code. We have to bring the building up to code. And today's costs are exorbitant. So, to bring that building up to code is costing extra money. And so for them to move to Sutherland and take this on ha, is, um, far more than the association itself could handle and so they were wanting assistance in that.
So this is the building right next to Summers?
S, between the hair salon and Summers, yes, yes.
Flags.
Yes. So the, the frontage is obviously already underway under the other grant. This is the relocation grant that also encompasses some of the remodel work and bringing a lot of it up to today's codes, so. The, the HVAC is probably one of the most expensive pieces and that is, one, it's, uh, the unit's nineteen ninety-one. It's designed for a four hundred square foot building and that's nine hundred square feet, so it's undersized. The unit is not energy efficient. Um, and so it's costing, it's running twice as much to heat when, and, and at an inefficient manner. So, to bring that up to speed would, we have, we have some bids, very expensive. But secondly to that, it doesn't have AC. And so it would have to be improved to add AC. Um, the building where the home builders is located at right now has heat and AC. They moved Sutherland, they want, they want that. Obviously, so to bring that system up to standards is roughly fifteen grand. And that's just the HVAC. So then you got the floor, uh, the floor is just, um, a bare slate, as some of you might know. The flag guy used to live there. He had fifteen cats. It was disgusting. So it's taking some work to clean up. Um, there's gonna be a much, a few interior walls built for storing some of the home builders' items, things like that. So, the back door also leading out to the alley is a thirty inch door, it needs to be thirty-six, so they have to reframe that and make it wider. So there's things like that that just need to be done.
I, I, I just wanna say, I think it's nice that they're coming over here to Sutherland. I think that's great. And it's too bad that some of our previous audience couldn't hear that good news anyway.
Exactly. The, the twenty five grand to cover the, um, the moving expenses, the improvements to be made, the bringing it up to code, those things. Of it, yeah, oh yeah, the home builders, uh, the board has already agreed to obviously carry a big chunk of that. Um, and the, the max that obviously was offered was the twenty-five, so that's, I mean, the, the HVAC alone's taking most of that, so. But the home builders' board is taking on a, a big brunt of the rest.
Did they sure, this area?
Oh yeah, it's, 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 uh, the whole, the Yonkwa Valley Home Builders, uh, is, is all of Douglas County pretty much. Um, they, they actually, there's a Home Builders Association in Jackson, there's also one in Lane. And so we kind of, we kind of just butt borders, it's, we'll go out as far as we can. And it's just not contractors, it's real estates, it's banks, it's anybody in the home building industry can be. I'm part of it. And, um, Smalling and Sons Construction, they're part of it. I mean, a lot of local businesses are, are part of, not as many as we'd like, but we're hoping by moving here. It's already prompted, their move in here has already prompted one contractor to join, so, and we're hoping more.
Well, you guys are a big part of it.
Yes. On the board.
The same.
Yeah.
Thank you for doing this.
Yes, I think it's gonna be an awesome, uh, they're super excited about the home builders, all the, everybody involved, they're super excited about the move.
Yeah.
So.
Great.
That's it. Alright.
Anything else? Nope. Vote?
Adam Sarnoski.
Aye.
Debbie Hamilton.
Aye.
Michelle Sumner.
Aye.
Lisa Woods.
Aye.
Gary Daigle.
Aye.
Larry Whitaker.
Aye.
Sean Smalling.
I'm actually on the board for the home builders, so I'm proud to stand.
Motion carries.
Okay, item number two, one oh three East Central Avenue demolition and parking lot prep. Staff report, please.
Good evening again, Brandy Maderas with community development. So the urban renewal agency is being asked to approve a funding request for a grant application as recommended by staff. The subject lots are located in the downtown area, identified as tax lot seventy eight hundred and seventy eight zero one in section seventeen DC of Township twenty five South. Range five West, property ID numbers R five five eight six two and R five five eight five five. As part of the urban renewal TIF or the Tax Increment Finance Plan Downtown Development Redevelopment was identified as one of the five project categories. We have received an application for downtown improvements at one oh three East Central Avenue. The applicant owner has submitted an architectural drawing site plan and quote for demolition, which are attached to the application. Demolition of the vacant building and development of the area will reduce flight and foster economic growth while retaining and enhancing the character of the district and will help revitalize the city's downtown core. The development will also provide additional downtown parking. The application qualifies for twenty five thousand dollars based on development redevelopment of the area. Staff will confirm all application requirements are met. Your options are to approve the grant application in the amount of twenty five thousand with the application requirements being fulfilled or to deny both the grant application in the amount of twenty five thousand. The suggested motion is to approve the grant application in the amount of twenty five thousand with the application requires, requirements being fulfilled. And I do believe we have the owner here, if, and the applicant, if you have any questions for her or trip. And this is the, um, the old liberty tax lot.
So it's gonna tear down that building and redo the parking lot?
Yeah.
You're correct.
Come on up.
Yeah. Hello, Laura Tripp from Sutherland Drug. Um, the application is to tear down the old Liberty Tax Building and prep for paving. Um, this is first stage of a much bigger project. We're applying for the Main Street Revitalization Grant. Uh, we just wanted to get ahead, you know, and start working right now, cause we're ready. Um, we've got quotes, we've got people ready to, to clean up that, that parking lot. Um, what else?
The demolition crew's been ready for a while.
Well, people are working on it just when they come and park, cause they just back in. So we're trying, we're gonna try. But yes, just the initial stages, we, you know, ending, the end project would hopefully include, um, totally redone parking lot, drive-through, redoing the annex and bringing in new revenue streams and new economic growth.
Hey. Hey. Thank you, Laura. Thank you. I need a motion. Don't even speak up a word.
Yeah, I, I make a motion and approve the twenty five thousand dollar grant for one oh three East Central Avenue demolition and parking lot.
A second. Thank you. Motion is to approve the grant application for one oh three East Central Avenue in the amount of twenty five thousand each as presented. Discussion.
What did that property used to be originally? Does anybody know? Gas station.
Gas station. Well, before that, I don't.
If you look at the, um, Oregon Water, or not the Oregon Water, our Sutherland Water Control District, they have some historical photos I found really interesting of that corner where it was a gas station completely flooded. You look at their historical, those before the dams were built.
Wow. Interesting.
Anything else? Vote please.
Adam Sarnoski.
Aye.
Debbie Hamilton.
Aye.
Michelle Sumner.
Aye.
Lisa Woods.
Aye.
Gary Daigle.
Aye.
Larry Whitaker.
Aye.
Sean Smalling.
Once again, I can't really vote on this, maybe part of this whole project.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Sean. Okay, any reports or any discussion? We're open to discussion. Looking out.